Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome for the workshop for Wednesday, September 18th. A quorum is present for us to conduct our business this afternoon. I want to share, we're going to start with some professional development with school board member Ms. Basine. Dr. Burdson and her administration will share with us the monitoring report for Goal Five. And then we will review the monitoring calendar and after that, we will go into closed session. So, board members, as I shared with you all, I allocated an hour and a half of this workshop, so we'll move accordingly for that. And so I don't want to take up too much time, so Ms. Basine, it's all yours.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Moore Buffalo, for giving us the opportunity to review our progress monitoring. So as you all know, over a year ago, we committed, well, we actually, longer than over a year ago, but we reaffirmed our commitment to monitoring student outcomes. And through that process, we established goals, we established non-negotiables, we established, we discussed what we wanted in our monitoring reports and what they should look like and so that we can monitor our progress toward achieving all of our goals and while honoring the non-negotiables. So we've been doing, we've been practicing that over the last year and have been kind of working through the progress monitoring piece of it. And so that's just one thing that, you know, I thought was important to touch base on to make sure that we are, in fact, you know, getting the information that we need so that we can make informed decisions and so that we can adequately monitor student outcomes for our district. And so with that, I wanted to share, the other piece I want to share, because this is, I think, really, I think, important for my board colleagues, for all of you to know, is that, you know, when we made this commitment to be focused on student outcomes and the student outcomes governance model, you know, I took that very seriously. And a lot of people have asked, you know, well, haven't you guys always been focused on student outcomes? Like, what have you been focused on? And I was like, you know what? We probably, well, I will say for myself, I have not been historically in my time on the school board in the way that we need to be. And so I took that commitment that we made very seriously. The Council of Great City Schools had opened up cohorts for school board members to participate in, to become more effective school board members to implement student outcomes-focused governance. And so I have been participating in that for the last nine months, which has been extra time and resources to participate and to learn really what it takes to effectively monitor student outcomes. And so I've really learned a lot through that process, and it's really challenged my thinking around what it means to be a school board member and what the work truly entails. And so with that, I want to kind of launch into this, and I'm grateful that we've all committed to doing this. And if you have the opportunity to participate in this cohort in the future, because they will have future cohorts, I strongly encourage you to do that, because I certainly have learned a lot in the process. So with that, I do want to, as we, before we dive into our monitoring report for Goal Five, I wanted to go over some examples. And we talked about these things at the last meeting as we went through our Goal Five monitoring reports. And I know as we work and practice to get things where we want them to be, I thought we could go over some examples. And so I've pulled up, I'm going to pull up a couple, I'm going to pull up a couple from Albuquerque Public Schools of a monitoring report here. And this is of one of their guardrails. And actually, I'm going to pull up a goal here, through the goal. Can everybody see that okay?
Expand it just a little bit more. See where the 100% is at the top. Come to the middle.
Wait, where am I? Okay. Sorry, I'm on an app.
There you go. That's nice and big.
All right. Okay. So, so just like we've been doing, this monitoring report has, you know, the goal clearly indicated here, and it has the interim goal here for what is going to be, whoops, going to be monitored in this particular report. So we have here, the interim goal 3.1, the percentage of high school students who drop out of school will decrease from 4.2% in May 2023 to 3.2% in May 2026. It is a smart interim goal, and under it has a line graph that depicts exactly, you know, where the district is today and historically what the trends have been. Now underneath the graph is then a summary of what the interpretation of the data is. So, and we've been doing that, you know, I think we've done a great job of reiterating what the data has been showing us. But in this report, you'll see that this includes systemic root causes for why we are seeing the data that we're seeing in the, or why this district is seeing the data that they are seeing. So the administration in Albuquerque here has indicated, you know, the systemic root causes outlined here, and then underneath that, they have the evidence in plan, the next level work. So that is specifically, and we talked about this last time, you know, of really diving into what some of the strategies are, you know, to advance this particular goal. So they appear outlined, you know, very clearly, you know, what their next steps are going to be, how they're going to monitor that these strategies are working or not working, and then what tools they're going to use to, like, for instance, the transcript reviews, the analysis from different reports. They're talking about what tools they're going to use to monitor the strategies. And so that's something that I think that, and this is for us to talk about, that I think that we could enhance or strengthen in our monitoring reports. And we, you know, we talked about that some at the, at the last meeting, but I wanted to bring this forward as an example of a monitoring report that does include not just the data and what's working well in terms of the actual data, but what strategies are working well and what strategies are not working well. So this is one example of that. But I do want to step back and talk about a couple of things. So in general, through this effective governance model, they typically, like, we've been taught to look for three main things in a monitoring report. And that is, does the reality match the goal? Like, so are we able to clearly see the academic data that's relevant to that particular goal? So the next question is, is there growth toward reaching that goal? So are we able, through the monitoring report, see whether we are making progress toward reaching that goal? And then finally, the monitoring report should include a strategy or a plan that's sufficient to cause growth toward reaching that goal. And so those are three things that really lend itself to a strong monitoring report, that they do those three things, that it shows us where we are as far as the goal goes, that we're growing toward reaching the goal, and that there are strategies that demonstrates that we can sufficiently reach that goal. And so those are, those are the three things that they often ask boards to consider even before adopting, a lot of districts, they adopt their monitoring report once their monitoring report has been given. But this is, those are some things to consider. So anyway, just wanted to walk through this one monitoring report. I want to, this is a work session. I want us to, like, have some discussion around how you all feel about this. Hopefully, you know, you've had some time to look at it, review it, because, you know, this was hoping to be part of the discussion at the last, at the work session meeting when we went over as an entry point to going over Goal Five. So my hope is that we can talk through this report, talk through whether we think that the items in this report are things that we want to see strengthened in our reports, which I strongly feel is necessary, but I want, you know, I think that's for us to discuss as a board. So, good.
Okay. So you want to stop here?
Yeah.
If any questions around this, I have one. One of the three questions that you asked was the growth, is there growth towards the goal?
Right.
Right? And so in this monitoring report, what part of the report would clearly indicate that, if that makes sense? Like...
Well, that would indicate that even though, and we've seen this in our data too, is that we see trends where we're approaching, we might not be meeting the target that we've set, but we're, you know, we're making improvement. We're seeing some trend toward reaching. So that's what we're looking for. So that's what that means, is that either are we hitting the target, are we on track, you know, or are we making progress toward being on track? But as you can see here, it's indicated, you know, that it's off track, but making So, and then underneath, it's why, you know, what does the data mean? Why, what is working well that is leading to some of the improvements, and what is not working well? And then really giving the board a clear picture of what's not working well, areas where they may need to pivot and do something different. So that's really what, you know, I was hoping we could have some conversation around so that we can strengthen our progress monitoring as we go forward.
So what I'm, so, because we still do have these same topics in our monitoring report?
Right.
So, just so, for clarification, so you're saying you want more detailed information included in our reports?
Yes. So I think it would be great, and I think the last work session that we had, I thought Dr. Pol did a great job of sharing with us some strategies that were actually, you know, were being implemented to advance progress, right? And so, but in hearing it, it was, it made sense, and it was informational for us, but it was not necessarily indicated on the monitoring report. So then what I'd like to encourage us to do is to have that information be, those strategies be included on the monitoring report, and how they know these strategies are working well, and if they're not working well, what other alternative strategy may be put in place to make progress.
Or what resources are needed to strengthen that strategy?
Exactly, exactly.
And then I think we also said that was important, so if it ties in, if it's a budget thing, we can support the administration with, you know, providing those resources in dollars.
Right, right.
Anyone else? So... All right. So we're, so, on that, what Ms. Basine just shared in the monitoring report, the, of course, we know the reason for it, but how we can just better strengthen our reports to get the information we need to see where we're, where we're going, if we're not there and...
Right, regarding strategies. And this is not, to reiterate, this is not a way for us to tell the administration how or micromanage, it's just to be knowledgeable about what strategies are being used and...
Because I couldn't begin to tell you what strategies are needed.
You know, and I know thankfully, because, you know, Dr. Pol did share with us at the last, you know, at the last meeting, what those strategies are. But, you know, I think it's important to indicate from an accountability standpoint that these, that we know what they are, and that we are able to see those strategies as we look at the progress over time, because these are not just, you know, at one point in, the data is one point in time, but we're going to be monitoring the data over a period of time. So it helps us know what strategies are working and what strategies are not working well, and what the administration is doing to, you know, put strategies in place that will advance student outcomes. So with that, that's, you know, I just want to bring that up for board discussion and affirmation or not, and...
Well, I understand, you know, Dr. Pol's share, I don't see anything, just putting them on the report, what those strategies are that they're using to get us to meet our goal. I don't have a problem with that. Am I getting us?
I agree.
This is the same conversation continued from work session?
Yeah, just talking about...
It is, but we walked through a, an example to...
Of the monitoring board.
Yeah.
Then if it's still the same thing in that respect, long as it's what's going to help me as a board member at my level about budget, then, you know, I mean, of course, we're going to see the academic success that comes out of there, but the details of it is, you know, it's good to know what we're using. So if at minimum is something that's helping move it, and we're putting money in there because that's what we're going to vote on, then that, yeah, I'm totally fine with that.
Yeah, I agree. Okay, Ms. Basine?
Thank you.
You have something, did you have anything else?
I mean, I would just encourage you, there are a couple other examples up there that if you have time to look through it, I would encourage you all to look through some other monitoring reports, just to get a sense of, you know, what a strong monitoring report looks like, so...
Well, thank you for that.
We can continue this as we look at Goal Five and the monitoring report. I think we just, like everything, and even for myself, as I'm going through this cohort, there's a lot of practice involved to really get into a habit of being focused on students. And it's, you know, it's been really eye-opening to see how, and Mr. Clanton, I was sharing how I felt like, you know, my nine years on the board, I can say that my first few years probably weren't as focused on student outcomes as they should be. And so how I'm trying to change, you know, my behaviors around being more focused, so, and that takes practice.
Yeah, it does, absolutely. All right. With that said, Dr. Birdsong?
Thank you very much. So, good evening, Chair Buffalo, Vice Chair Dr. Gabriel, members of the board and administration. Today, we're prepared to report out on Goal Five, interim measure number three, all related to advanced diplomas and our progress towards meeting the established goal by the board. So without further ado, Dr. Pol?
Oh, what do you mean?
The mouse. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Birdsong. As I open this up, I do want to just make mention of the discussion at the last work session and the opening of this work session, that we have had discussions around that administratively. However, if you recall, the due dates of board docs are due two weeks, so we really couldn't make adjustments yet, so you'll see adjustments on the next one, based on some of the discussion that was at the last work session. So again, and thank you, Dr. Birdsong. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, Madam, sorry, Madam Chair Buffalo, Vice Chair Dr. Gabriel, board members, and Dr. Birdsong. I'm here this evening to talk about Goal Five and specifically Measure Three within Goal Five. So as a reminder, and I will zoom in a little bit more for us, Goal Five is around the percentage of graduates receiving advanced studies diplomas, really tracking to the class of 2027, and looking to be above the state average, which at the time of the making of this goal was 51.5%, and the NPS average was 35.3%. So Measure 5.3 specifically looks at our 2025 cohort, which are now our current seniors, and the measure was for 34% of the graduating cohort to successfully complete the appropriate courses to be on track to graduate with an advanced studies diploma by the end of 2324. So as a reminder, with the small subtext down here, the 2025 cohort to be on track for an advanced studies diploma, they must be enrolled in and successfully passing their third or higher math, English, science, and history courses. So they have to be in their third one, because they need four credits of each of those. They must be passing their second or higher language course. So if they're in French II at the point and they're passing it, they can be on track, because they can still take French III their senior year. Or if they were in French IV, clearly they've already surpassed it. So as long as it's or higher, that's perfectly fine. They must have completed their economics and personal finance course, because we prefer them to complete that before their senior year. And they must be passing at least their first elective course, because there are two required electives in order to get an advanced studies diploma. If students are not enrolled in these level classes, they are not included in the percentage able to obtain an advanced studies diploma. So if they weren't within this area, so if a student was only completing their second credit of math, let's say freshman year they came in and they struggled with algebra, they had to retake it as a sophomore, and so they were in geometry as a junior, they only have two credits at that point. So if they were passing that, they still would be out of the percentage of on track for an advanced study, because getting that fourth would mean they'd have to take a summer course. And if, you know, we just didn't put them in that in last year's data, assuming they'd take a summer course. So as the data show, in the line graph and in the chart data that we provide, we did start to have an upward trend, and we started to close the gap towards the goals that were set as we closed out the year. And more specifically, the end of the year, 4.2% the target, below the target rate, with 29.8% on track for an advanced studies diploma. However, there was a 5.2 point increase from third to fourth quarter. And, you know, really to know, for Goal Five, to know if the division is on track or off track, we really have to focus more on that cohort 2027 data that we're tracking, and we presented on that during the last board meeting. And although the target wasn't met, the final target can still be met for cohort 2027 based on their student enrollment and courses that they've passed already. So we can still be on track for that cohort as we move forward. What's going well, the increase from third to fourth quarter was 5.2 points, which is an improvement from the change from second to third quarter. So we saw higher growth from third to fourth and second to third. The improvement from first to fourth was a total of 4.5 points. And really, the use of tutoring funds and attendance recovery initiatives helped to increase the pass rate for students in this fourth, and actually for second semester, when that attendance recovery came out during the second semester. What's not going well, students in the 25 cohort are not currently passing some of the required courses to achieve the advanced studies diploma by their graduation cohort year. Additionally, as explained when this goal was initially being discussed by the board, even if all students passed the courses they were enrolled in last year, we knew going into it, based on this measure, that only 34.3 would, percent would be able to be considered on track for an advanced studies diploma due to the previous course enrollment and successful completion of courses. Of course, this data is very malleable because of some of our transfer rates and our modality in and out of the division. Being a military town, it changes it as well as we, as we go year to year. Therefore, many of this cohort were already behind in courses needed to achieve the advanced study deployment when the school year began, and the 2025 cohort is below the target for some failing grades. And the highest course of failure rate was mathematics for this cohort. So some next steps, currently centrally create the shared list, as we have been doing with the other cohorts, to make sure that the school counselors know to track the students who are on track for an advanced studies and make sure they have the supports they need. Ensure schools are providing direct supports to all students in 2025 cohort that are still able to achieve earning an advanced studies diploma as they become at risk for failing a specific course that they may need, to make sure that they still have that advanced studies diploma option open to them in May, June, or May timeframe for us when graduations come around. And to support this goal, really from the board perspective, continued funding for tutoring, which you guys did add to our local budget when we did the budget amendment. And then, you know, the all-in funding from the state, you know, anything we can do to propose that that continue when the three-year term expires that we're currently in, as well as the states move towards the attendance recovery, which they put out something late last week on continuing for this year. So any, you know, advocacy, advocating we can do on that behalf to continue those are great supports from the board as well. So that concludes our update for Measure 5.3.
You've heard the report from Dr. Pol. Are there any questions? Mr. Clanton?
So, like, when it comes to policy, when it comes to legislation and, like, the legislator day, you know, talking about, if it ever comes in, do we want to, you know, extend the all-in funding for another term? Or do, you know, do we find it useful to have the attendance recovery? You know, for the board's support in those areas, that would be very important.
Yeah, I just saw it.
Thank you. Dr. Birdsong, Dr. Pol, what in your review of, so if you go down to what's not working well, so you talked about classes that, courses that students are not currently passing. What, what specific classes are students not passing, and do you know why they're not passing them?
So Dr. Pol did mention that mathematics is the course that our children aren't passing, and that's not anything new. I think that's been a trend for quite some time. For whatever reason, some children don't believe they're mathematically inclined, but I think we are doing what we need to do to provide supports in that area. Teachers are, of course, permitted to stay back, and we provide funding for that through tutoring. Schools offer tutoring before, during the school day, after the school day. Of course, parents can come in with conferences, with teachers, to support their, what can they do at home to better support their children? Those are the kinds of things that can be done. I think one of the barrier courses continues to be, I know Algebra II has always been a problem course for a lot of our children. And again, we can offer the tutoring to provide support for the students. Certainly, we can't do the coursework for them, but we can put supports in place to support them through the work.
And I think, Dr. Pol, you even said, once they get to a certain point in high school, they need the four years.
Right.
So if they're behind, you know, it's kind of...
Hard to catch up.
Hard to catch up.
And the failure rate on mathematics is specifically to the students within the percentage that were, we were tracking, that were on track to be in advanced studies diploma, so they were in their third or higher math course. So, and another dilemma that we find from time to time is if a student has fallen in a failure in their third math course, they realize they can still retake that math course senior year and still graduate, just it wouldn't be with an advanced studies diploma.
Okay. And is there something that could be done? So, and I appreciate that response. Is there some, are we seeing anything that, you know, maybe in the transition from eighth grade to ninth grade, that, you know, like Ms. Moore Buffalo just said, you know, that once kids start getting behind, it's hard to feel motivated or, you know, feel positive and confident about your math skills? So is there something else that could be put in place, you know, or do we know if any of those transition points are key areas where we could focus, you know, strategies around, or have you looked at that?
So we haven't looked specifically at mathematics key transition. We know, you know, our biggest focus is with literacy, and actually, literacy has a connection across all content areas, which is why this year we added the ninth grade literacy tutors for struggling readers to help with that as well. I know it's not a direct connection to the math, but it really will be in the long run. And the other thing is the continued support with our eighth grade math support block and reading support blocks that we have in place with tutoring help with that. And, you know, I think it's probably, you know, worth mentioning, around four years ago with the VDOE, they were rolling, prepared to roll out new math standards that wouldn't allow students to take EOC math courses at the middle school level. And now they've reversed, and now they're at the other end, where the new accountability system is actually going to, you know... system is actually going to, you know, part of middle school accountability is going to be around students who complete an EOC math course. So the change, there's been a lot of change going on that we've been working with.
Yes.
And I think generally, the transition from eighth grade to ninth grade is a very challenging one for students generally. And just thinking on my days as a middle school administrator versus high school, the eighth graders were usually the very mature kids in the building. They followed directions. They were typically compliant and engaged in a lot of the after-school kind of things and tutoring. And then I don't know what happens during ninth grade. During ninth grade, they're, they seem to be a little less mature, immature, or less mature, very immature. It's just a very difficult transition. You can see the behaviors in the ninth grade. You can, I think the rigor that high school you have to have in order to be successful going from middle school to high school, that's often a big jump for students, and sometimes they struggle with that. So you will see a difference between what goes on in eighth grade versus what goes in ninth grade, both academically and as it relates to discipline as well.
And, oh, go ahead, Dr. K.
I had the opportunity to visit where when you did Let's Get Ready for Algebra.
Mm-hmm.
And I went to a couple of different classes. I went to a class where the kids were trying to prep ahead before they took the course. And then I went to a class where the kids were almost in a remediation type of situation. Really, with math and with a lot of other subjects, sometimes it's not necessarily the content, it's just organizing yourself. Getting material with those. First, we're going to introduce the topic, then we're going to take our notes, then we're going to do a quiz, fill your work. And that's what I saw a lot of in the class that was doing that.
You have to do your homework in math. You might skip a couple of days in other subjects, but you have to do your homework in math.
You have to do it. And, you know, when I, and so as far as strategies go, and if you know math is something that kids are struggling with, and we know that math teachers in general, they're very hard to come by.
Absolutely.
And so if there's a way that you might be able to identify those kids in the seventh and eighth grade year and kind of customize some courses for them over the summer, I asked one of the kids, and I said, you know, what, what do you think would help you to do your math better? And several of them said, I just need to understand how it applies to me. What am I going to use this for?
Make it real.
What am I going to use this for? You know?
For life applications.
And so, you know, I was, I was just helping, you know, my daughter with some of her homework. And I'm like, I use this every day. You need to know this. Don't screw this up. But I think that applicability and maybe in the summertime, since it's not as rigorous as the school year, might be something that you guys could consider. But I was very impressed with what you all offered over the summer.
I do believe we have a robust offering of academics during the summer, and enrichment, but definitely academics.
Dr. Martin?
I'm just thinking about how we are using the word advanced and how it's all relative to the person.
Absolutely.
That we're focused on. And I don't know if there's any other way we could, because obviously you would know this, any other way that we could offer the stepping stones to bridge that student who doesn't think that math's for them? And that even basic math might be a challenge? And to show them in, like, I want them to, to see that they're moving up and that even though it's not what we're considering AP classes now, but for them it is, that they're, that they're seeing the progress, hopefully making the progress, and that they're not feeling as remedial anymore, even on their, at their own pace. So can you speak to any strategies or anything that is going on that may be similar?
So the one-on-one with your guidance counselor, your school counselor, as we call them today, it's very, very important. And having that contact with them throughout the year, as well as parents, to make sure that whatever the child's goals are for, you know, post-secondary, what they look like, and making sure that they're on track to meet those goals, it's really important because, as you have pointed out, every child is different. Every parent's dream for their child may be a little different. So it all depends on what the kid wants, what their parent wants for them, and just making sure that they get what they need and stay on track. And when they're not on track, you know, put some supports in place to get them back on track.
So how often does a student normally see their guidance counselor?
It really depends on the kid. It really does. Some kids will see their counselor every day, for whatever reason. And some may need to see them once a month, and some less frequently, just depending upon what their needs are.
Mr. Jordan?
Yeah, I'd like to start just with a question around the conversation that we were just having. Do we actually have any actual data that shows what students' attitudes are towards math? I know we're, we all have our own antidote, but do we actually do any survey data that suggests that X percent of students feel this way about math versus some other way?
I'm not aware of a survey specifically about math and perceptions around that. I'm not aware of an instrument that...
Okay. Yeah, I just, I just ask because I think that it's important, to the extent that we can, when we're having conversations about this, to actually know, at least from a board's perspective, you know, are we putting our own experiences, whatever our limited exposures are, into the conversation? Or do we really have some actionable data that would support whatever it is that we believe that may result in, in particular action? So I just raised that because I think one of the, it's easy for all of us to just kind of think about what we think we know, and as Ms. Basine started off earlier, you know, what the real reality is. And so if we, if we believe that attitudes towards math is a barrier or block or hump, then let's quantify it and then have an understanding of what we're doing to break the barrier. But if we really don't know, and we're just kind of hypothesizing, then, you know, I'm not sure where, where it will take us. But I'd like to go back to the overarching, what we're doing here. Couple, couple of things, Dr. Paul, you mentioned that, I probably say this every time we monitor this goal, so forgive me for my additional handheldy support. But can you come all the way down to the, so we can see the overarching goal?
The goal or...
Yeah, right, just up a little bit, just right there. So when you were describing, I thought I understood, you were describing what a student has to actually accomplish in order to receive an advanced diploma?
And this would be by the end of junior year, for them to be on track for it.
Okay. And, because you're using a lot of, you know, your English and this and that and that. Is what you're, is what you describe actually on this report?
It's, so it's right here.
Okay, that's what I want to...
Yeah, so this portion right here. So the, the science that we're using on this, the data science is around looking at what does it take to have an advanced studies diploma? And what track would a student have to be on to still be able to do it by the time they graduate? So to have an advanced studies diploma, you have to have four credits in each of your core content areas. So by, by this time, and this is where it gets confusing with, because I understand what you're saying, that's why I tried to reword it in the script a little...
Yeah, that's what you always throw...
Because you have ors here.
Right.
You have an and here, and then an and here.
Right.
So you have to think of them separately. So it's a third or higher math course, meaning a student who's currently in their third course, or it could be their fourth course or fifth course. Because we could have a seventh grader who started Algebra I, who's now in pre-calculus. And so they're included in this. But if we didn't say or higher, then it's like we're not including them mathematically.
Okay.
Then it has to be the third English course because they can only earn English credits in high school.
So it's the, so it's the first thing?
Correct.
And?
And the second thing.
And the second thing.
And the second or higher language course.
Right.
And the third or higher science course, and the third or higher history course, and the completion of economics and personal finance, and the first or higher elective course. So this is the and right here that drives it all.
So, so as a Boolean guy, that's what, that's why every time I read this, I struggle. So can we, in just in terms of clarifying the description, can we just use parentheses and ands? Because each time I read it, when I, and the and is not explicit, it, it, at least for my brain, it causes confusion for me. And so that's why I asked that question again, because if there are ands, let's say ands, and if it's a whole bunch of ands with a bracket around it and then an or, I think the same way we would do in math, to help with grouping, can we group it in the wording so that is, so it is clear on, at least hopefully for somebody who's picking it up, that it's clear on what we are actually saying, one must, all the things that one must have in order to be on, on track?
So I, even, so what I'm hearing, Mr. Jordan, is I could take this and reword it, say data includes students passing their third or higher math, English, science, and history course, and their second or higher language course, and their completion of economics, personal finance, and their first or higher elective course. So just add the ands there so everybody can see. So more like programming language than English language.
Yes. Well, at least, at least for me, because, because that's where I struggle with, because each time I read it, and I know I ask you this question each time, because I was trying to figure out, if you can just do one thing, do you count as on track versus do you have to do a series of things in order to be...
All those have to be true.
Okay.
In order to be on track.
Okay.
And the, the ors just mean it could be higher than the...
Right.
Third or second or first.
Okay. So with that having been said, then, when we, because we're, we're still in this report dealing with how we ended the previous year. So we showed that we have, we have 29.8%, basically 30% of the students who, at the end of the previous school year, had those ands and the or.
Correct.
Okay. Then for this school year, when, at what point can we predict or assess what we are expecting the cohort 2025 to have to achieve for this school year in order to move forward? If I'm, if you understand what I'm trying to ask.
And it's a complex question. So we're, we're really, the September 30th SRC, which is our solidification of what, what students are then reported at the state level at the end of the year, is, is an important line, and we have that pretty well laid out.
SRC is...
The state, it's state report data.
Okay, okay.
Basically what it is. And, and we're working internally right now on all of the goals and interim measures, on, on, on data and what we'd be setting for this year for measures. So, you know, I'd, I'd want to say, you know, mid to late October, but I definitively, I can't guarantee when that would be, where they'd be set. But, you know, we are having those discussions already and bouncing back some numbers and looking at what we can do to provide that.
The, the second thing that, that caught, really caught my attention, I think at some point during explanation, you were describing how it's really the class, the 2027 cohort that will determine whether or not we meet the goal over time. So what, what is it about the, the progress monitoring and the focus that, that we have on the other cohorts that we are learning or assessing that, that over time sets up the 2027 cohort for success?
So when we are starting to focus now on our side, not with the students and their performance, but on school counselors, teachers, administrators centrally, this, this push to say, hey, we want to make sure our students have every door open to get to this level. We feel it's better practice to look at all levels as we go through instead of just watch that one level go, and then each year it's something new for the next level that they're getting to.
So is there, and you probably shared this when we were monitoring the other cohorts, but can you just give me another example of something that you really learned from the, I'll say the more, the closer cohorts, the 25, 26 cohort monitoring, that was a aha, if anything, that is now being implemented as a strategy and support for the 2027 cohort?
Yeah, I think the higher focus of discussing this during academic and career planning and for them, you know, kind of, I'd, I'd say the stick-to-itiveness, right? The importance for them to understand that lab science, your fourth year of high school, that you really don't want to do, or, you know, you figure, I can just repeat Algebra I, and I don't need to worry about it spring semester, I'm going to just make it a wash at this point. Those conversations with students and providing, providing specific lists to school counselors earlier to say, these are students on track for advanced studies diploma, you know, that we want you to monitor a little closer. And then, you know, I think what we've talked about from the very get-go, knowing that foreign language is a, is a gatekeeper, and not, and not necessarily accessibility to foreign language, just desire to take the foreign language.
And I, one, one final question then. As you're, I mean, obviously, we're looking at cohort data across the district as a whole. What's, what's your sense, if you have, if there is one, and you have comfort speaking to it? Do you, do you see any differentiation or disparities or supports, school by school? Where one school, like Dr. Burtsong was mentioning earlier, in terms of the school counselors and/or foreign language options? Or, you know, we have a lot of conversation about the effectiveness of teachers. Are we, how do you feel it's going from seeing all of our schools being able to implement these strategies and recommendations that, that you're identifying and that you're encouraging take place?
So I, that's a tough one. I don't, I don't have all the answers right now, Mr. Jordan.
Yeah.
And as we go into our, our data meetings in the fall, which will start in October, these will be conversations we have at each of the schools. But additionally, you know, the past couple of years, we've really tried to transition to the online course requests and to get more of student-driven course requests rather than teacher-available course requests. And I think that will help drive some of the change too. But then that also comes to, you know, if we have, you know, 500 students that want to take Spanish I, and we have enough teachers to have 300 take it, you know, you know, we need to also work with how are we staffing where we need? And I think, you know, our HR folks have done a great job at really answering that, to that call. But, you know, that's, you know, looking at staffing timelines earlier, which we've already discussed, that for this year.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions for Dr. Paul? All right. Well, thank you, Dr. Paul.
My pleasure. I think I'm going to stay standing here for just one second.
Mrs. Moore Buffalo, before, before we get into this, so can we, can we for a minute talk about our process? So, you know, we've, we've gotten to a point where materials are posted two weeks before the, the meeting.
For meeting.
And question, right? So I think we need to have a process that the board uses to submit questions, get responses from the administration, and, you know, so that when we are meeting, we're having a very focused meeting, and the administration also has an opportunity to, to look into the questions that we ask and, and provide that information back to us. So at some point, and I, if we could have some conversation about it, I shared two Google Docs to kind of outline a proposed timeline for doing that. And I don't know if the board had a chance to look at it yet, but I, I do want to figure out when we can... figure out when we can talk about it and establish a process so that we're all on the same page.
Has everyone seen her, okay, so that's?
And I I really think that it's important that we have the administration.
Yeah.
Yeah, they were.
They're the ones that are.
Yeah.
You know, doing the heavy lifting with response, regards to the responses.
Right.
Because I s- I saw what you already had on.
And I included um, Dr. Burson on that, yeah, yeah. So it's that governance team, yes, absolutely.
We can make time to talk about that, but um, everyone hasn't seen it, so we can um, again, administration, because they're the ones that's going to be getting the information. Um, so we can have that discussion. We'll make it happen in a future meeting, if that makes sense. Because everyone hasn't seen Ms. uh, Basine's email. Ms. Clanton, did you have a chance to see it?
I saw it. Um, didn't delve deep into it. Um, because I know, I think the email you said that we would talk about it.
Yeah, so, Mr. Mr. Jordan?
Yeah, just a couple of things. I think generally speaking, I think it, I appreciate the the attempts, I think it aligns with um, some of the work that we had done before, trying to make sure that we were providing um, questions in advance. So we we moved the timeframe for the reports. This also means now this gives us also the opportunity to submit questions in advance, to allow for it to be uh, responses back. Everybody gets an opportunity to to see it, whereas, you know, previously, we were trying to write all the questions in a three-day period and try to turn that around. So I do think it's a, uh, it it falls with the practices and the recommendations that we had worked on anyway, in terms of trying to get questions in advance. And um, and then the other piece of it is um, by getting the responses back, it allows everybody to study and to be on the same page, so that, like what we just did in this monitoring, you know, each of us may have different questions, but if we've asked them in advance, we've understand them in advance, now the conversation can be even more focused on what we should be focused on and um, you know, and and take away any surprises and and that that type. So I think it's a best practice, it's something that we said we were going to do, it's something that we've written it up. And so to me, it's just a matter of um, of figuring out how to change um, what we what we do to allow for the the cultural change to take place. Uh, so I would encourage us not to keep, because we've kind of pushed this thing for a couple of years now, and I I think it's time for us to start implementing some things and figuring out uh, does it, is it working for us? And if there are other things that you all always hear me say that we need to stop doing in order to start doing what we need to be doing, then let's start doing what we need to be doing, and let's stop doing the things that may be making it more stressful uh, for us to to do the work that we need to do for students.
Back to Gabriel.
I really like the idea of receiving the information early, being able to submit questions ahead of time, submitting the questions so that all the board members understand kind of where you're coming from, your lens. Um, if it's if it's um, one or two questions, three, I think it's uh, fine, and if the superintendent and the administration feel that, you know, they can respond, you know, relatively quickly and briefly, um, then I uh, I I I would have no problem with that. But if we get to the point, and this can be for the discussion, I'm just kind of thinking ahead, if we get to the point where um, we're having so many questions and it's taking so much time, we did do that before, a a while ago, many, many, many years ago, and and it became very cumbersome um, for um, the individual who was preparing all the report. You might have even been preparing some of those reports, Dr. Burson, now that I think about it, as I'm talking it out. So um, just also remember that we have the opportunity to do a a two-by-two, a one, if we really need a lot of clarification on something, we can, you know, meet separately with the superintendent. So I say that to kind of also frame some context when we have this discussion, maybe at the work session in October.
I think the goal is though, because if we submit the que- everyone sees it, so they're not in um, bombarded with the same questions, if we can all see them. And I think that was the idea around the Google up, because it's it's there. Oh, I don't have the accent question, because, you know.
Yeah, it's already on there, yeah.
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 Well, I was going to say, the other piece of that is, whatever we may have done in the past, we were probably not student outcome focused, we were probably not trying to be strategic in our questioning, it probably was a lot of operational matters. And and so, again, I think that.
I felt like my questions were always student outcome related.
Of course, you felt that way.
I have always.
Doesn't make them so.
On student outcomes, I'll just say that.
Yeah, and 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 there's, and and I live in denial too, but uh,
Y'all are fun.
Uh, but the the key point I want to make is, is that this is part of a a cultural shift for us too. And so being able to see the questions that are being asked gives us the opportunity as a board, as Dr. Burson has asked several times, because she always asks me when we're in the discussion, well, how's the board going to hold itself accountable? Well, when we see the questions, we have the opportunity, you have the opportunity to say to me, Rodney, I think that is a operational question, I don't think that is a strategic question that's focused on what we said we agreed to. That gives us to be accountable and to hold each other accountable, versus just simply saying uh, that I'm going to take my question that is already not focused, and then I'm going to ask the superintendent to give me an hour of her time to spend with me that is also, that is not focused, you know, so so I I think.
Well, we're on the same page then.
So it's about our adult behavior change as well.
Exactly, exactly. And even some of those operational things, I will say, we can, we can find a way to to say that their student outcome's focused when they're actually, you know, not, because everything that is happening in the district is technically tied to that, but we're not, we're not necessarily being focused, so.
Dr. Martin, do you have any thing to add to the conversation?
No, I mean, I um, I haven't been able to look at the document, I've been moving a lot of things, but um, but I agree with the conversation, um, that it's, you know, we can um, monitor each other on our questioning.
Yeah.
And also, maybe someone's going to ask a question that we hadn't thought about, and it'd be nice to have that discussion before the meeting as well, so.
Can I answer?
Yeah, I, I mean, I'd support it the the two weeks. Um, definitely, I I think once we get on the schedule, um, until it gives enough time for knowing what's coming up. And I think, and I've gone back in here, um, the Philadelphia Public Schools was one example a couple of years ago that I went into research that I appreciated, how they not only had the information up there, it was public-facing, it allowed individuals for the um, the community to provide their written testimony, as well as an opportunity to speak. Um, and it's all very user-friendly, um, but so that board members can get that context before we actually get to a meeting. But, you know, I I think the the main thing is that we're getting questions ahead of time for the administration to get there, that means that by the time we get to this meeting, for a business meeting, we should be focused on action, and not a whole lot of extra follow-up, um, for clarity. I mean, and I'm not saying that, but I'm just saying that that should really be the, if we move to this one, we can reduce on the other end, so that we can really be focused to get in here and, you know, be student outcome focused. So I agree, two weeks, let's let's get out there, let's work with the administration on how that looks, um, so that it's friendly uh, to them, because we want them to be focused on what they need to be focused on, but also to support what the board needs. And, you know, so that we can make informed decisions that I agree that are student outcome focused, so.
Can I add to that, because I, we were looking at, both looking at the Philadelphia um, Public School website, and how organized it was and how um, community-focused it was. It was, it was putting all that information out there, and um, and that really helps us to do our job if we're, you know, if we have people, if our citizenry is educated.
Yep.
They can find stuff easier.
And they can, exactly, find it easy.
Sometimes when you can't find things.
Which we've been talking about forever, yeah.
Well, I hear agreement on the two weeks. Um, please, everyone, look at the Google Doc and we'll get.
So can you give me access, I'm sorry?
Yeah, I gave you all access, everybody has access, Dr. Burson has access.
And um, see what that looks like, the process, but we all in agreement that we um, want to um, move towards that goal. Okay. All right. Thank you, Ms. Tanner, for pulling up the progress monitoring calendar. Thank you, Dr. Burson, and our administration updated the monitoring calendar in front of you, I'm sure you have had time to um, go through it. It breaks down, again, the goals, the measures. Uh, we added the strategic goals, reports only on the chart, the measures, evaluations, and other things that we wanted to include um, on this monitoring calendar. My goal is for us to um, vote on this, to make sure that we're all in sync of what we um, expect to uh, monitor up until twenty twenty-seven um, as we move forward, and this will be the template to do so. So are there any questions around this progress monitoring calendar, Ms. Basine, and then Mr. Clanton?
Um, wait.
Or Mr. Clanton?
I'll let him go first.
I'll ask mine real quick. I mean, are we, we sold on this red?
We, we, we can.
Say that again, Mr. Clanton.
He said we sold on the red.
It's burgundy on my screen.
You know, that wasn't my choice.
I I I know, I was like.
You have a a color that you uh, prefer instead of the red?
Oh, are these Newport News colors, is that what's going on?
No, it's not Newport News.
No, I'm not saying, I just, red to me is just, you know.
All right, well.
That mine was real cosmetic.
I think that was the template that we got. Was that the template, that's the template?
Mr. Jordan is over here.
The board.
That was all, I mean, other than that, I I think.
I thought you were going to ask a an actual question.
It was a request.
Dr. Burson, we can change it to dark green or?
I I agree with that.
Okay. Ms. Basine?
Friendly.
All right. So about the content of the monitoring calendar. Um, so it's 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 an improvement. I have a question around, and if I've missed this, you know, I've looked through it. Um, so we are also going to be monitoring our our non-negotiables.
So in the non-negotiables, they weren't on the last one either that was presented to the board?
Yeah.
So we could add a column for the non-negotiables if we need to?
Okay, because we do want to make sure that we're monitoring that as well, so.
And I think we need to have a discussion about that, because how do you monitor non-negotiables? If that's kind of a framework within which with you operate in?
But that is, well, because you've established interim non-negotiables to, that we would use toward monitoring progress toward toward those. So um, my thought is that that those progress measures would be monitored by the board, not at the same pace or rate as as the goals, but they should be monitored, you know, at least twice a year to make sure that, you know, they're being honored.
If I may, if it's written twice a year, then, because when I hear the non-negotiables, those are for the superintendent, these are your guardrails, these are the non-negotiables, and how you carry out your work. As long as you do whatever you need to do, as long as you don't infringe on those. And then I'm hearing you say two times a year, I I I think.
Each of each of them, so like, so we would be monitoring the guardrails throughout the year.
What I'm saying is that they're what we've imposed on the superintendent, and if I'm hearing two times a year, then I'm almost hearing midterm annual evaluation, because they really should be what we use as the board, because we've come up with them, on the evaluation component. Did you do all these things and not infringe upon those things? And we will find that out from the data. I just don't know how that would be on this throughout the the year. Because I thought it was more for us, I mean, yeah, it's public, but it's more for the board to say, um, you know, as you're going out and look, seeking out equity, you know, one of the things we had down there, that you don't let anybody else slip and fall. Well, we're going to see that in the data, right?
Right, but she has established specific progress measures for each of the non-negotiables, if you recall.
Mm-hmm.
So those specific, and they're measurable, so those specific items should come back to the board and say, this is, you know, yes, I'm doing all this, those are, those are, you know, the non-negotiables that the administration is is following, but this is how I know that, you know, and coming back to the board saying, this is how we know, and this is how I said I was going to share, share with you that these are being honored, right? So it's all of this, everything, everything on this monitoring calendar is technically tied to an evaluation from the top down. So whether it's a board goal or a non-negotiable, right? But we ha- we don't, what's not on here and what wasn't on the previous draft were the non-negotiables.
But if I can ask, because I thought I heard template, did I hear that this was a template?
No, well, this is, this is the.
We produced a monitoring calendar, and then we were given one to put some of our information in it. So I feel like it was a template provided to us.
Right, right.
But, I don't know, is that something that you um, provided? I know what I'm saying is, uh, because I haven't gotten into the um, the access into the guide. I'm just trying to figure out, is there another example? Like you provided an example on something else, is an example that shows the non-negotiables in a document like this?
Yeah, we, I think an example has been provided previously, but um.
From another school division that used this, and I'm just saying, I would like to hear practical application and implementation.
Yeah, we, I mean, I could certainly share examples from other school divisions that are doing that.
That may help me just better under.
Visual.
Visualize it.
Visualize it?
Then that way, then, you know.
Okay, yeah, and I and I think Mr. Jordan's probably sent one from.
You sent that one? I know you got something in there.
Well, and I think he, I think he's.
You know, you're a data guy. I provided it, we discussed it last year.
Yeah, I know he's provided it before, so.
No, I'm just saying, what you, what you, what you call a template, part of, if we say we want to be student outcome focused, obviously, there are goals. The goals are about what students know and are able to do. The board also has set non-negotiable based upon the values that we have. So, for example, we talk about, I don't remember if this is one of the ones that we're monitoring, like, we always talk about um, uh, teacher placement, right? So we could have had a non-negotiable that said that, and I think we do, yeah, that talks about the percentage of.
Provisionally licensed teachers.
Say it.
Provisionally licensed teachers.
Right, so, so all the, all the monitoring of the guardrail would be is, uh, whether it's twice a year, four times a year, it's going to be as frequent as the board feels is needed, feels is needed. How are we honoring and and making progress towards the non-negotiable that we have set while we are also monitoring the goals? Because otherwise, we. Yeah, because.
We haven't, we didn't catch it.
Right, right, so it's it's not, it is very different from doing uh, goal monitoring, because goal monitoring are really about students, student outcomes, what students are able to do. But having on the chart that we will receive uh, reports on our non-negotiables, whether they are reports that we just receive as a written report, or whether we have decided that we're going to have a conversation about them, that is part of us making sure that we are upholding uh, both ends towards uh, being student outcome focused.
And I appreciate that. The only thing that I'm, I'm just, when I'm hearing that, that I just want to make sure that we don't skirt into, because those non-negotiables are superintendent, right? So does that, and I'm asking attorneys here, does that skirt on the evaluation component? Like what we would do with any other employee within the school division, where we're saying publicly, you're meeting this or not meeting this, that type of thing, I just want to.
I hear, I hear.
You know what I'm saying? I, we'll get the information, but I just don't, I just want to make sure that we're not. And that might be something we can't answer now and come back, but the only thing I'm, I'm hearing that, I would love to have that information, but just like any other employee in the school division, evaluation is this, because we're going to use this information to evaluate, but if it's public information, does that skirt on?
You know what, there there is an ex, just just so that you can even see a monitoring, there is an example monitoring report for a guardrail up there. So, I mean, it's a monitoring report, not a calendar, but you could see on there that it's just like how we're monitoring the goals, but it is.
Is it a report to send to us?
It's a, yes, and it's 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 up there, and I think on board docs as well, but you can um, pull it up and look, but there, the monitoring report is the same setup like for goals, but that is something that the school board should be monitoring, even though it is. is something that the school board should be monitoring, even though it is their parameters of what the superintendent, administration need to, what they will not do, but it is still something that the board needs to monitor. It is not like violating, if I, if I hear you correctly, like privacy-
Yeah, I'm just wanna make sure. My, my thing is, is I'm just looking at the same thing that we would do with any other employee, because we would use this information for evaluation purposes. If it's a report that's given to the board, and it's not a Dr. Poll or whoever else is giving up here, I just want to make sure that we are-
I, I hear what you're saying.
You understand where I'm kinda coming at that?
I, I don't. I mean, we'd have to look at each individual case, but I don't perceive that anything you would be told with regard to monitoring those, something that would become, if there was something, then it could just be discussed in close session.
Good, okay.
It would be, you know, excerpted from the public.
The public, all right. Okay. That's the only thing on that one. I just came to my mind, and I mean, just, we're working it through.
Yeah, if I just want to, if I can, just to speak to that. So all, all of this is intended to be transparent. So one of the things that we have talked about, we know that the, that, when we look at the way that we do evaluations here, we know that there's a portion that deals with academic progress. We are being transparent with the community and with ourselves, saying, these are the goals that we've set, these are the interim measures that we're set, we're monitoring them, we're evaluating ourselves, the division, the superintendent, and all employees on it. So there's no, I mean, we're being intentionally transparent about that. There are all kinds of other pieces as part of the superintendent's evaluation or individual employee's valuation that's beyond this, that, you know, falls, to me, stays and falls within that confidentiality realm. But this is, actually, yes, we, we know as a board and as a community, that as we look at how our students are doing in literacy over time, we are doing real-time evaluation. I mean, that is part of the progress monitor. We're evaluating the performance of our students. We're evaluating the performance of the district. We're evaluating the performance of the superintendent, everybody else. Because at the end of the day, our focus is on, on our students doing, doing better.
So I, I would like to, the board to share some examples of what that, the non-negotiable looks like, and we can have a conversation around that. Because like I said, ultimately, I just want us to all agree on our, moving forward on our progress monitoring calendar.
We definitely should include our sequence for non-negotiables and, you know, board trainings and other things, but it definitely should be a part of it. And then I guess my, my question is, when we, when we see the goals as we currently have by, by month, is there any way, how's it, so like in September, so we did interim measure three today on the second meeting, is there any rhythm to that? Or when we see three goals in a month, do we know which, which day or which meeting that we're going to be monitoring which thing?
Okay, so for example, October. I can say that there is four monitoring reports. So two will be done, board goal one, and two will be done at the work session, and board goal two and five will be done at the workshop, if that makes sense. And just, that was my pattern of thinking. For example, if you go to November, there's also four. So first two, work session, then second two, workshop.
So I'm, I'm good with that. I just, as long as that's, as we're all understanding that that's the-
Those drafts are on board docs, but that's, that's my frame of thinking, if that makes sense. And December is a short month. But yeah, that, that's my, my frame of thinking, because it can be overwhelming when you're presenting all these monitoring reports in one sitting, so, in one meeting.
And then my last question is, where we have the strategic plan, goals, reports, and measures, they, they are, they are showing us what we're going to receive, but they're not necessarily aligned with the goal that we're monitoring, correct? So I think that's important, that we understand that, like on the one that's right there on the screen, that where it says, the second one says interim measure two dropout rates, and then you go over says resources, and then measures. Resources and two through four and six through seven aren't necessarily tied with dropout rates. They're, they're just tied with information that we're going to receive.
Received from the administration. Yep.
Can I can, like, embolden this line right here?
Yeah.
To make a little bit more of a separator?
Oh, okay. So what I hear is, we're gonna get example of the board. If you could send us out an example what that looks like.
And the other thing to add on to this is, you know, we have Title I through four that we are required to review and approve, and the special education plan. So I might include, include that under the other as well.
At April and June?
Yeah, whatever the dates, the months that those are. That was the only other issue I had.
You're saying items that we know that we are-
We're gonna have to approve.
Yes, that we're required to vote on. Because I mean, this ultimately will also help with agenda planning and, you know, so you know what's, what's coming down the road.
Yes, because I think we have the budget up here.
Yeah, like you have equity report, but then-
And budget submission is up here.
We have the plans that we routinely, you know, that we're required to review every year. The CTE plan, the special ed plan, all the title.
So, and the plans are different from like the, so, like GAC and CAC, they have, like, typically send a letter or whatever else. I know we were talking about trying to-
Feedback.
Feedback, have an opportunity to meet with them. In this particular monitoring calendar, I know, hyper-focused on student outcome, which is there, but then I'm also like, community engagement, and how we're involving the community in that process. Is that anywhere in there? Because I mean, that's an important component. I mean, if we're, when we talk about literacy, you know, are we, is the administration looking at something and pushing for a program around getting the community to be readers and getting seniors to come in? I mean, I just, I, I know we have all these high-level things, but it's the other pieces that are important.
One thing I'd, I'd love to see the school board do is have listening sessions and have that be on there, where we're actually reporting out, you know, how we're doing, based on these goals and non-negotiables. So, you know, that's an engagement, community piece that could be, that I've seen other divisions include on their monitoring calendars, because it is tied to the, the goals and the non-negotiables.
I would reckon, so if I understand, let me, let me tell you what I think I heard you say, that if the superintendent is going to be out doing something specific around engaging the community, you're asking, should that, should that be here?
Well, I'm, I just say it specifically like an engagement thing, but I'm, and I don't know if it's, it's the, because I know community engagement is in the strategic plan somewhere, right? And maybe that's gonna come out in one of those reports. I'm just trying to figure, my mind came in about community engagement as to where that falls in there. Maybe that's in the strategic plan, because it's one of the domains, right?
You go back up.
Ms. Tanner?
Oh, Ms., Dr. Poll's driving, okay. It's community, yeah.
Got it, okay.
Well, no, community is an area under the strategic plan.
Right.
But it's not necessarily- What I, what I was gonna say to you is, if the, this is, you know, board level focused. We have agreed that we have set some non-negotiables for the superintendent. We've agreed that the board is gonna be focused on student outcomes, and we have agreed that the superintendent has then leeway to implement what she feels she needs to implement in order to accomplish the goals. So if she, if, if she and her team have decided that they need to have forty community engagement sessions and workshops in order to either honor, to honor the non-negotiables or to help achieve the goals, that's on them. And so we wouldn't put on our monitoring calendar, monitoring whether or not she has forty sessions. We just, she just knows that she can do what she needs to do, as long as she's honoring those guardrails to accomplish the task. And so I think if we start, if we were to stray into putting superintendent and administrative actions into this, it's around community engagement, it will-
Yeah, I understand that's what you perceived in it, but what I'm thinking about is the board. We've also said about talking points, that we're in the community, that we should be on the same page. So the engagement that's not, I'm not just talking about the superintendent's engagement, but how the board fits into this, to be trusted messengers, to support what's happening in the school division and being on the same page. That's where I'm kind of, you know, what Ms. Basin is saying.
Yeah, that's what I was saying.
So that, that's what I'm-
The board's engagement.
Exactly. Our level of engagement, I'm not getting into the superintendent, I mean, that has that piece down there, but again, keeping it at the board level, how do we support that, and how are we monitoring ourselves to make sure that we're on the same page? Are we doing, because I, oftentimes, I know that we've got a little bit of, you know, council great city schools that's coming into this and some other things, and we're kind of making our own hybrid thing here, but there was also this discussion about community meetings, about what the school board does, and engaging different groups. So that's what I'm talking about. Are we going to, at the board level, add that back into here somewhere? And where does that, that fall in?
I'd love to see that.
So this kind of reminds me of what the conversation we just had about goals and being more specific with the strategies. So that would be a similar thing here in the presentation, to list out the strategies that worked and didn't work.
Yeah. But then I, I just think that even on an annual thing, maybe it's, you know, as we're, as we're looking at all of this monitoring, maybe we also say, board, what is our level of engagement on communities, so that we're all on the same page, or we're doing something unified, or, you know?
Which is what we-
Yeah, you know, it's like, I've been saying, I would love to see, Dr. Birdsong, this is not a shoe, so, but I would love to see a state of the school. Look, don't say, I said, I would love to see the state of the schools come back. I always thought that was a great way, and many school divisions do that, as a transparent opportunity for engagement and bringing folks in, in kind of level setting. This is what we're, this is what we said we were gonna do, this is where we are, and this is what the focus is for next year. You know, that's just an idea out there, but-
Yeah. Or like an end of the, school board end of the year report or something like that, that goes out, and it doesn't have-
We should be doing real listening with the community, because we're representatives of the community, right?
We used to have an annual report that-
Right, well, that's why I'm saying something that's just kind of hit those, yeah.
Every month at every meeting, the board is engaged in a mini state of the schools report tied to a specific goal. In addition to that, if the board quarterly, which I think we should do, and I support what I hear both of you all saying, we should be able to go out as teams and share with the community our progress. These are the goal, we, this is what we listen to, these are the goals that we've set, these are the priorities that we've set, this is the reason why we set them, and we are communicating directly with the public, you know, at a, at a certain level, how, how we're, how we're progressing. So I, I do think that's something we should build in.
And I think that builds trust.
Yeah.
You know, and it doesn't allow the community, because if they don't have it, and we aren't getting along and providing that transparency, then we leave it to them to set up what, what their perception may be.
Yep. Good stuff.
Thank you.
All right, thank you all. And so the-
I'm Mike Kuzon.
There's a Norfolk teacher that went to school.
Okay. So the time now is five twenty-four. Thank you all for this discussion and this workshop. So, so right now, we're going to transition to our closed session. May I have a motion to go into closed session, please?
I may if I may go into closed session.
I second that motion.
Okay, Dr. Martin, motion. Ms. Basin, second. Any discussion? Ms. Tanner, could you please read the motion, please? Yes. Move that the members of the school board of the City of Norfolk go into a closed session for the purposes where to set out in subsection A of section two point two dash three seven one one of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act as amended for discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of the school board pursuant to subsection two point two dash three seven one one A one of the act. The subject of this portion of the session is the discussion of personnel on today's regular personnel agenda and the ongoing investigation and possible disciplining of specific personnel, discussion or consideration of disciplinary and any other matters concerning students in Norfolk Public Schools that involve the disclosure of information contained in the scholastic record pursuant to subsection two point two dash three seven one one A two of the act. The subject of this portion of the session is a discussion of students on today's regular students' report agenda and council station with legal counsel and a briefing by staff members pertaining to actual or probable litigation or regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by council pursuant to subsections two point two dash three seven one one A seven and eight of the act. The subjects of this portion of the closed session are for legal advice by brief, and briefing by staff members in connection with the matters set above in subsections A and B of this motion. Basin?
Aye.
Clanton?
Aye.
Gabriel?
Aye.
Jordan?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
And Buffalo?
Aye.
We're now in closed session. Good evening, and welcome to the school board business meeting for Wednesday, September eighteenth. A quorum is present to do the work of the school division tonight. So with that said, Ms. Tanner, please call the roll.
Basin? Here. Clanton?
Present.
Gabriel?
Present.
Martin?
Present.
And Buffalo?
Present. Next on our agenda, we have the pledge of allegiance, and I'm doing the pledge of allegiance. Kayla's doing the pledge of allegiance. She had my name down here. I thought it was a little special, but I guess not. Ms. Kayla, can you? Kimani? Kilani?
Kayla.
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 Good evening. We request that all cell phones and pagers to be turned off or to vibrate during the course of this meeting. Thank you. Please rise and remain standing for the reciting of the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, so we're gonna move on to four point zero four. It's the swearing in for the school board representative. Ms. Tanner?
Yes, if board members can join us at the step and repeat, and Dr. Birdsong and Chair Buffalo, if you could come to the left of the podium as I conduct the swearing in. Birdsong, you can come right here. Chair Buffalo.
How are you doing?
Left side. Dr. Birdsong. Oh, you come on this side, Ms. Buffalo. There you go. Arms in point, okay. She's ready.
Okay. Want pictures first? All right, that's right, that's right. Okay. You're welcome.
Raise your right hand for me. I do solemnly swear-
I do solemnly swear-
-or firm-
-or firm-
-that I will support-
-that I will support-
-the Constitution-
-the Constitution-
-of the United States-
-of the United States-
-and the Constitution-
-and the Constitution-
-of the Commonwealth of Virginia-
-of the Commonwealth of Virginia-
-and that I will-
-and that I will-
-faithfully-
-faithfully-
-and impartially-
-and impartially-
-discharge-
-discharge-
-and perform-
-and perform-
-all the duties-
-all the duties-
-incumbent upon me-
-and become upon me-
-as a student representative-
-as a student representative-
-of the school board-
-of the school board-
-of the City of Norfolk-
-of the City of Norfolk-
-for a term-
-for a term- For a term.
Beginning September eighteenth, twenty twenty-four.
Beginning of September eighteenth of twenty twenty-four.
You got it. And expiring May thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
And expiring May thirtieth of twenty twenty-five.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. I need you to sign here, Kayla, and sign here. I'm cursing you.
Thank you.
That blue. It's black, and they write. I'll sign right here, sweetie. Got a great doctor's signature. A long name, bear with me. All right. Get all the extra loops. So let's give her a round of applause. Now we have Carson, right? Who do you look like, Mom or Dad, or your combo kid, let me see? Good combo kid, I think. We compose. Thank you.
I do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
Are you ready? And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the Commonwealth of Virginia.
Of the Commonwealth of Virginia.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge.
Discharge.
And perform.
And perform.
All duties.
All duties.
Incumbent upon me.
Incumbent upon me.
As the alternate.
As the alternate.
Student representative.
Student representative.
Yes. Of the school board.
Of the school board.
Of the city of Norfolk.
Of the city of Norfolk.
For a term beginning.
For the term beginning.
September eighteen.
September eighteen.
Twenty twenty-four.
Twenty twenty-four.
And expiring.
And expiring.
May thirtieth.
May thirtieth.
Twenty twenty-five.
Twenty twenty-five.
According to the best of my abilities.
And according to my best of my abilities.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. All right. She's elected too.
Yeah, I love it. I know.
Get all the extra loops too, Carson. Let's clap and affirm her. I'm the chief of teacher with the superintendent and the school board. So let's, let's put the ladies in, the student reps in.
I'll get in the middle of them and then have them. What about that?
There we go.
How about that?
If I get, we'll get you a squeeze in just a little more so I can get.
Yeah.
If you had an Android.
That's exactly, well, you know, Apple or nothing. One, two, three. One, two, three, and one more. One, two, three. Perfect.
All right. Some business stuff. All right. Team, we're going to move on to four point zero five, adoption of the school board business agenda. May I have a motion to adopt the business agenda?
Madam Chair, I move that we adopt the agenda as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Clanton. May I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Dr. Gabriel, second. Any discussion? Ms. Tanner, please call the roll.
Bassin?
Aye.
Clanton?
Aye.
Gabriel?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Buffalo?
Aye. Four point zero six, superintendent's report, Dr. Birdsong.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair, Dr. Gabriel, members of the board, administration, families, and community members. Thank you all again for being here this, this evening. We have a wonderfully produced video again for you this month. We are very excited to highlight some things that are going on in Norfolk Public Schools to include a celebration of our teachers of the year. We're very, very excited about that. And we also have a division-wide reading initiative that we're really pushing out. So parents will hope, we hope you're reading with your children every night alone with us. So without further ado, please play the video.
Schools across the division celebrated the fall kickoff of all district reads in early September. Copies of the featured book, School Days According to Humphrey by Betty G. Bernie, were distributed to excited students in grades pre-K through five by staff and community partners at several schools. The goal is for students to read a chapter a day at home with their families.
So this is really for family literacy. This is for the children to bring the books home, read these books with their families, including their parents and other children who are in the household. And it's really to get the entire community reading the same book uh, so that there's all kinds of community connections as well as increased literacy.
Old Dominion University recognized Norfolk Public Schools' top three teachers of the year, including district-wide teacher of the year Melissa Hales, on the field during their home football game against East Carolina. This now annual tradition is always a highlight for Norfolk's top teachers. During the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five school year, Norfolk Public Schools is continuing the Community Eligibility Provision Program, which ensures that each student in every school can receive a free breakfast and lunch daily. Parents don't have to fill out applications, cafeterias don't have to keep track of money or forms, and students can always get two free meals a day at school.
It's really important for all students to have access to healthy nutritious foods at school, and it's important that the schools be able to partner with parents to make sure that we take care of that need. So having the community eligibility provision has just tons of benefits.
It makes it a lot easier. Um, the children can just come through and they don't have to put a number in. So it gives them more time to get their meal and sit down and have a chance to eat it. It feels really good.
Norfolk Public Schools invited stakeholders to the first-ever Equity and Excellence Learning Centers Expo. The learning centers are designed to provide extended learning opportunities for students along with family and community engagement. The expo gave the division a chance to explain how the centers will work and get meaningful feedback from parents and the community.
Our goal was really to spread awareness about our EELCs and make sure that we provide families the opportunity to ask questions, get involved, um, and also our community members, and just to continue to grow and develop some new partnerships.
Guests attended smaller breakout sessions and could speak with over a dozen community vendors that were on hand. Those in attendance were grateful to learn more about the centers and excited about the opportunities they will provide.
I love the fact that we're beginning to look to the future for them rather than just talking about just education for today, our, the SOLs. So I believe that this program is going to help our children begin to look forward to not just what's going on in the classroom, but what we're going to do in the future.
Lake Taylor School hosted a special first responder night during their football game against the Churchland Truckers on September eleventh. City Council member John J. P. Page got things kicked off with the honorary coin toss. At halftime, Assistant Police Chief Michelle Naughton, Officer Sean Blackwell, and Fire Chief Sydney Carroll were recognized by NPS staff members for their outstanding commitment to protecting the citizens of Norfolk. For the complete stories and more information about what's happening in Norfolk Public Schools, visit the NPS homepage and click on the YouTube link.
Awesome, awesome. We're going to move on to four point zero seven, citizen comments. Ms. Tanner?
Madam Chairwoman, for today's citizens comments, we have four speakers. Today's speaker signed up for public comments before the start of today's business meeting. If you would like to provide public comments, you are required to state the agenda item or items or topic you are addressing prior to providing your public comments at this meeting. When your name is called, please come forward to the speaker's podium, state your name and whether you have a child in Norfolk Public Schools, or if you are employed by the district, and state your agenda item or items. One person is to speak at a time. If you are representing a group, state the group's name. You may ask your group members to stand in place to be recognized. Speaking time is limited to three minutes. A timer is set with an alarm that will signify the end of your speaking time. State your position and give relevant data or facts. Avoid saying anything that identifies students or personnel information about individual employees. Personnel, disciplinary, and confidential matters may be addressed to the school board directly via email at schoolboard@npsk12.com. Comments should be addressed to the board and not addressed to an individual member. School members do not respond to public comments at the time they are given, and any written statements or supporting material should be given to the clerk. Chairwoman Buffalo, our first speaker for today is Kyla Waters, followed by Keenan Baskerville.
Welcome.
Hello, everyone. My name is Kyla Waters, and I'm speaking on the behalf of Virginia Organizing. And today I want to speak about the mindfulness program. The mindfulness program is a program that builds believers. This program helps people learn to manage stress and anxiety and body awareness. My sister, for example, overcame a lot of tough obstacles. This pro, that this program helps. It grew her mentally and emotionally and made her avoid automatic habits and responses by learning to observe her thoughts and emotions and other present moment experiences without judging or reacting to them. Throughout this response, this is a change that I would like to see implemented in Norfolk Public School systems.
Thank you.
Keenan Baskerville?
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Keenan Baskerville, and I don't have any case in Norfolk Public Schools. And I'm here to speak on you guys' EELC program. I'm a community organizer, actively involved with caregivers in the J-COS community. Over the past, uh, few months, I've engaged with over two hundred people and have conducted over one hundred and fifty needs assessments. One striking observation is the persistent lack of awareness among caregivers about their school's EELC program. Despite the pro, the program's adoption and development, parents have not been adequately informed nor included in the process. Last month, I came here and I discussed the groundwork laid out in Norfolk Public Schools' five-year strategic plan and its subsequent community objectives. As well as pillars one and two in your EELC program, the EELC Expo did a great job of creating a picture of what could be for these pilot schools. Superintendent Birdsong mentioned a community classroom dedicated to helping families with solutions grounded in data that you've listened to parents, students, and teachers and that their school's EELC could provide health services like mental health along with various other things that may negatively affect a household. What was important to me was the mention of the EELC program management teams, task force teams, and the needs assessment the family engagement team is supposedly working on. These were all great things to mention. However, parents who were there and even spoke with so, some of you all on the phone still walked away not feeling quite involved, nor were they given ways to join these teams. During the expo, you had the opportunity to conduct needs assessments, interview parents and students, and engage in live work sessions to ensure that inten, that attendees foster a sense of inclusion and ownership in their school's planning and development. Instead, we broke onto our respective schools and were told about enrichment activities that parents had no involvement in, that weren't accessible to their entire school demographic, nor last long enough to positively impact parents who struggle to pick up their kids. Yesterday, I had the pleasure of speaking with Dr. Walton where it was explained to me that a needs assessment wouldn't be necessary because it's only a snapshot of families' needs. And he has such a snapshot from his group of stakeholders, but not the entirety of the school. How much data do you think is necessary to make a conclusion on what services to provide at your schools? The fewer representatives of the families of the schools, the more this board enables decisions that are unrepresentative of the needs of said families. I'm requesting that you visit your respective schools, get on the same page as your principals, decide when and how your needs assessments will, will go out, and encourage your, your community's involvement at all levels.
Thank you.
Raquita Robinson?
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. Um, I am Raquita Robinson from Richard Bowling Elementary School. I'm here to express to you uh, my concerns um, about our beloved school. While the school board does not involve itself in the daily operations of schools, um, my citizen comments just serve as a, a courtesy because I feel like when we know better, we do better. And as you know, as a faculty and sta, um, as you know, faculty, staff, and parents brought up some concerns during the twenty-two, twenty-three school year to let you know what we were seeing that may have been some unethical practices being put into place. And um, as we predicted, you know, our dedicated, many dedicated colleagues left, and some wanted to leave but were unable to do so uh, because so many had already departed. So then last year, we underwent even more egregious abuses, and so more resignations, transfers, reading specialists gone, uh, math specialists gone, new math specialist come in, gone, Title One specialist gone, um, this year's ins, uh, instructional coach gone, gifted teacher gone, behavioral specialist transferred, school psychologist gone. Um, so we are now a school that has not been able to get teacher specialist, uh, to work there. We continue to witness this kind of a severe treatment, taking away the students' access to the Life Enrichment Center mentors, which is a nonprofit, profit, uh, widely supported by seven other Norfolk schools and which was piloted at Richard Bowling, but is no longer afforded to our students at RBS. Calling the teachers' union and setting up meetings with a representative of the admin's choosing and time. And I didn't know, does the admin get to call your union and ask them to be present in your meetings without, uh, meetings with principals? Locking teachers out of their work folders in Googles. Our lesson plans become the property of the admin at RBS, and we're forced to submit lesson plans in the admin's locked folders. Staff meetings at RBS that can last till six PM. Teachers, uh, told her to sit in planning meetings and, uh, if you want to wear jeans, or, or you're being insubordinate, um, if you want to wear jeans, it's seventy-five dollars. If your uh, husband passes away, you'll get a call to return back to work. Um, a student repeatedly being referred to as Tyrone in staff meetings, which is not his name, but instead a derogatory uh, stereotype. Veteran teacher with a doctor called out in the staff meeting for earning a high salary that takes away field trips and student activities. Um, have a new baby and need to access milk during the school day, workday? Not at RBS. Want to take leave? Disapproved. Um, consensual staff staying behind to set up for a political event, you're assigned even more laborious tasks, even if you've already worked a full workday, uh, and you don't get paid overtime. Want to read The Kissing Hand on the first week of school? Not at RBS. Teacher in a wheelchair, you will get moved classrooms every year.
Thank you.
Email you the rest.
Thank you.
Carl Poole?
Welcome.
I'm Dr. Birdsong, Chairman of Buffalo, members of the school board. Good evening. My name is Carl Poole, and I'm an organizer of New Virginia Majority. I came here tonight to ask a question.
I came here tonight to ask a question of the board and to make a request. Has this board reviewed any written document or detailed plan that outlines family and community engagement strategies specific to the Equity and Excellence Learning Center program? I could ask about written plans and strategies for other things involving the EELCs, but let's start with a clear outreach plan since if you follow the community-school model, that's where you're supposed to begin. Now, beyond the purpose statements of the four pilot schools, a few paragraphs briefly describing EELCs on the NPS website, and a short overview, I haven't seen anything that might involve an engagement plan. I'm beginning to doubt whether any of you, members of the board, have either. I appreciate a good set of rules. They keep me grounded. But there seems to be no clear set of rules for how your superintendent with her administration will build the energy of involvement necessary amongst the NPS parents and community members for the EELC program to succeed. I'm concerned by this. Because all of you as a board, along with your superintendent, developed a set of rules called non-negotiables that hold yourselves more grounded and accountable. For instance, Superintendent Non-Negotiable Number Four essentially states that without responsive communication and engagement outreach strategies in place, the superintendent will not allow major initiatives to go forth. Despite this, the EELC program is still moving full steam ahead regardless of what it clearly seems to lack, a focused and drawn-out plan to encourage community involvement and investment in the four EELC schools. Under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, I am requesting access to all public records related to the community outreach and engagement plans for the EELC program. This request includes any documents specifically related to the community outreach and engagement for the EELC programs that have been, one, provided by the Norfolk Superintendent of Schools to the Norfolk School Board, two, reviewed and discussed by the board, and three, approved by the board and set policy. Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, this concludes our speakers for this evening.
Thank you to all the speakers. We're going to move on to 4.08, Approval of the Consent Agenda. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the consent agenda.
May I have a second?
I second that motion.
Okay, any discussion? Ms. Tanner, please call the roll.
Basine?
Aye.
Clanton?
Aye.
Gabriel?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Buffalo?
Aye. Move on to 6.01, Monthly Financial Report. Dr. Birdsong?
Madam Chair Buffalo, Cheryl Spivey will come forward and provide the financial report for the SMO. Spivey?
Yes. Good evening, Chair Buffalo, Vice Chair Gabriel, school board members, and administration, Dr. Birdsong. This report...
On a personal privilege, Madam Chair, Ms. Spivey, can you move your mics up to you a little bit? There you go.
This better? Can you hear?
If you can put it in front of you. Just put the mic in front of you.
Right in front of you.
There you go.
Is this better?
There you go.
Thank you. This financial report is for the month of August, and I'm getting used to the new deadlines on these reports, but yeah, starting the, you know, preparing a financial statement at five days after the month end does cause some complications. And I want to discuss some, you know, just mention some of those today. And looking at the report, the revenues, so far this year, we've collected $60.6 million of revenues, and that's about 13.2% of the budget. One thing I added, or changed up a little bit this year, I mean, this month, based on a question from a board member last month, is about reversion and where reversion shows in the financial statements. So looking at the statement of revenue, we had, our reversion was different last year, which causes it to be different this year. And it had always been shown, or at least for years had been shown, as fund balance. So, you know, revenue source from our fund balance because the monies were being held in our accounts. And you recall, last year, it was processed differently in that the reversion funds went back to the city, you know, as the intent of the law is. The city did allow us to rebudget all of those reversion funds. So when you're looking at the statement of revenue, under city funds, I've added the reversion for the fiscal year '23. So that's the most recent year that we have audited. And that is the year that we are allowed to budget those funds. So it's the last year audited we can budget in the two preceding years. And so you can see that, that we requested $30,572,000 from reversion, and we received that. And we, the way we receive our funds from the city is we do an annual request of a monthly amount split to, you know, split into two payments. So one, you know, the first part of the month, one the middle of the month. And so that's what will be shown here. That's the way we've always shown the regular appropriation. But starting this year, we're showing the reversion amount there as well. And one of the reasons I moved it is I think there can be confusion about which reversion we're using. So, you know, we've now ended fiscal '24, and we still don't know what that amount is. But we, you know, we expect there will be some. That reversion wouldn't show in these fiscal year '25 financial statements because we're not allowed to use them until, to even request use of them until the next year. So I'm hoping that that provides some clarity that I wasn't able to provide last month. On the expenditures, unfortunately, as I was preparing for the report, I noticed an error in the financial statements. I have corrected financial statements, you know, that are available, and I'll just go over what those look like for expenditures. The, in the financial statements, the last few categories of expenditures had a formula problem in them. So the actual amount of expenditures and encumbrances to date is $55.2 million. And that is about $5.4 million less than the amount of revenue we've taken in. So...
Yes. Can you say, where are we looking at that? Oh, you have, okay. Yeah. So Ms. Spivey, am I to, this is what the board, you're asking the board to approve?
It is. If you have the opportunity to see it.
Okay, does the clerk, other than now, have a copy of this?
No.
Yes, it is. So, no. The clerk needs to have an electronic copy of this, so whatever the board gets, the community has to have it at the same time. So I would ask that we can't take action on this unless we provide everybody with this at the same time.
Okay. All right. Well, Ms. Spivey, you can go over this report, but the board is not ready to approve it. So we'll move it to the next business meeting, but you could still, and if they have any questions.
And so I can answer some questions? I mean...
No, you can go ahead through the report and then allow for questions.
So the total amount of expenditures so far this year is $55,250,000, which is about 12% of the total expenditures. The... I did have a couple of questions on the financials, which will, are related to these sections on facilities and operations. And if allowed, I'd like to go over those next month when reporting both, maybe both months, because that's where the corrections were made.
Okay.
Yes.
So Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Clanton?
Without objection, I'd like to just ask that we dispense with this until our next meeting.
I agree. We're going to take this, absorb it. Ms. Tanner will get an electronic copy of this, and we will approve this at the October business meeting. Ms. Basine?
So would you like us to reserve our questions regarding this to the next business meeting?
Yes, because we haven't digested it.
Okay.
So, yes, please.
I would ask, just if I heard you correctly about the error in the formula, if accompanying this, if there is some sort of a summary of what you can describe as what that error is and where we're looking at it and how it impacts the previous financial reports, that would be, if it does at all, it would be helpful to us to have a summary of what the error is, how the error was found, what it impacts, so that when we do approve this, we know exactly what we're looking at. Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Spivey. For board members, we have exhausted our agenda. We'll meet again on Wednesday, October 2nd, for our work session here in the school board room. With no other business, this meeting is adjourned.